It's freezing in here again.
It's too hot.
Thanks. Somebody's got a list chair.
So, welcome back to the March 1st Board of Selectments meeting. The first item on the agenda is to discuss lease with DNS Realty for the senior center. I think the first thing is the director, if you want to step forward and you have some information you want to bring up in regards to some issues at the church.
Yes, we have two ladies here who run the food pantry. Martha Adams from the Atlantic. She wants to come over here.
You can come right to the table there if you'd like.
Sure.
I'm Martha Adams. I live on Maple Street in West Boylston. And this is Marie Leonard from 24 Alhambro. And we're kind of in a unique position because we are volunteers at the West Boylston Senior Center and we are also volunteers at the West Boylston Food Bank, which I don't know if you know, but it's located, the West Boylston Food Bank, at the First Congregational Church in West Boylston in Fellowship Hall. And we just wanted to bring forward to you that we have some concerns about confidentiality for our families that come to the food pantry. They do come during the day. We have anywhere between 14 and 26 families that avail themselves of the food that's available at the food pantry. One of the big things that the food bank located in Shrewsbury wanted to make sure is that who they are, why they're there, and what type of food they take out of there is confidential. I'm not quite sure if you have the senior center move there, how you can keep confidentiality in place and still have programs going at the same time. We also have a concern about the storage facilities. I just had seven students from the high school come on Monday for an hour and a half to help us organize and move around some of the stock that we have there. We frequently get donations in and they build up in front of the, where the ramp is when you go into the First Congregational Church. Can't leave them there because it would be a fire hazard, so we have to move them into certain areas. Because we don't have a lot of storage, our storage is five different areas at Fellowship Hall currently, which becomes problematic sometimes because if you have something on the stage where our refrigerator and our freezer are located, and it's the summertime, and you have like say frozen pizzas or something, we have to bring them down and have them take them out. We also have a concern about the floors at Fellowship Hall. They're waxed and they're shiny. There is an elevator located at Fellowship Hall, but if it should be out of service, the stairs that go down to Fellowship Hall, when you walk in that ramp, are quite steep. Also, I help run the We Bowling Program at the senior center. And once a month, we do have a bowling tournament with other towns. The towns that are currently involved in that are Sterling, Rutland, and Hubbardston. So you have seniors from those three towns that come once a month to West Boylston to do the We Bowling with us. And I'm concerned about the parking situation over at the Congregational Church. There's not a lot of parking as it is. If you're going to add in the volunteers, the seniors, and then the people that come for the We Bowling from out of town, I think that's an issue that you should look at also. But the main thing was the confidentiality. There's a lot of people in this town that you would be surprised at that go to that food pantry, and they will stop coming. We have had that happen before. Right now, it's the third Tuesday of the month. It goes from 1:00 to 4:00, but they are lining up at 11:30 because they are frightened that they will not get enough food. I don't know how this is going to work, if you're going to have people from the senior center there attending programs. You also have that nursery school there. I don't know how the people that have their children in the nursery school feel about it. I can't speak to that. That is not my church. But I do know that even some of the clients that have come through in the past month have mentioned to us, are they going to know I'm here? And that's a big concern for us. We don't want to lose our charter. We don't want the food bank in Shrewsbury to say, you're not living up to what you should be living up to. So we thought that we should bring that concern to you. So the three things are basically the confidentiality, the storage, which now, I have a little more storage. When I say "I," I mean the food pantry in general. But that's, those students had to work an hour and a half just to make room that's not even probably as big as this table for the donations that are coming in now. And around the holidays, our membership goes sometimes to 30 people, and they are lined up. And a lot of the people are really people that need the food pantry. I would hate to see it have to shut down because we can't keep the confidentiality part to it. And the third thing is the safety. I'm concerned about the We Bowlers on a waxed floor bowling there. And I'm concerned about if there's ever a time that the elevator is not available, that they wouldn't be able to get down the stairs. There's no way they could get down those stairs, down to Fellowship Hall, because they are quite steep. And there's only two or three, but they are quite steep. So we just wanted to bring those to your attention because I'm not quite sure if any of you have ever been to the food pantry, have had anything to do with the food pantry.
Not that one there, but I've been to others in other areas.
Right.
Yep.
So.
So that's one, that's one day a month.
One day a month, that's a Tuesday. But we are in the other times during the month to check on donations. We have to check on expiration dates. Unfortunately, people, when they clean out their refrigerators or their closets, they put it into the food bins that are collected at the churches. And if you put anything on those shelves that's expired, they can shut you down immediately. If it says Best Buy, it's okay. If it says expires and it's on your shelves and they come in from the state, they can shut the whole food pantry down. So we try to get in there at least once a week. But a lot of times, we can't even get into Fellowship Hall to check on some of this food because the nursery school is using it. People that have had funerals at the Congregational Church frequently have taken coffee downstairs after. I can't really speak to all that goes on at the Congregational Church, but I have been doing the food pantry for the past seven years, so I'm very familiar with that and with the concerns of the people in town. There's a lot of seniors that take advantage of our food pantry in West Boylston. They will not come. They don't want people to know they're there. And we are mandated not to say who's there and never to comment on what they take out of there. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
If I may, we actually discussed that in our executive session. We're considering making this the temporary home for a year. We're talking 12 days over the next year that there's going to be a food, a food bank. We discussed, no decisions have been made on anything, but one of the things we discussed was on the Tuesdays that there is the food pantry, the senior center might have to be closed for half a day.
Well, you know, I didn't, I did speak to Lisa about that also, but they have ongoing programs there, and I don't know, she'd be willing to give up Meals on Wheels for the...
Well, the, we discussed that as well. We wouldn't be giving up Meals on Wheels. Again, this is 12 days. There's other, there are other communities that do Meals on Wheels. The Worcester Elder Services, it can, we can coordinate to make sure we can do Meals on Wheels for one day a month out of a different facility. The, the only thing that we may lose for that day is we perhaps could lose the meals that are served at the senior center, but we do have the option potentially of moving the lunch back an hour. But if it's, if it means that the senior center has to be closed for three to four hours a month due to the food pantry, there's the library right next door. We could coordinate with the library to do the programs for that one day a month in the library. So the, as far as all of your other concerns with the running of the food pantry and the storage and all that, the church is telling us that they have the space. That, that's something that you would have to work out with the church and say, hey, look, we run this food pantry here. The, we were all at the church. I don't know where your food is stored, but that, that has to do with the church. The church is the one that is saying that there is the space for us and you.
You know, I've done Meals on Wheels for seven years, and I've never known a different venue to send out meals. I'm not saying that they wouldn't do it from the Worcester.
I can't imagine that, I mean, I can't imagine there's not an emergency situation that if there was a fire at a senior center, I'm sure things still happen. So we're asking for one day a month possibly for another facility to help us out.
I don't know how that, how that works.
I don't know the answer, but I, I would be, I'm with Mr. Russo. I'd be willing to bet that there are provisions and something can be worked out for 12 days over the course of a year with a, with a neighboring community to, to do mutual aid for Meals on Wheels. I don't foresee that being an issue.
My question to you is, why can't we stay where we are? We have a contract there, why can't we stay there?
That's a bigger issue, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but we have a, a business owner in town who is looking to add on a 25,000 square foot addition and bring in a business that's got 150 employees to do potentially upwards of $4 million worth of renovations to the building, which will increase the tax rolls and will benefit the town as a whole. If I was sitting in the senior, sitting on the, as a member of the Council on Aging, I would say, you know what? This isn't ideal. This is our home. We're here for another year. We up here have to sit here and say, what's in the best interest of the town as a whole and not just, not just one segment of the population.
Okay, so you put us in a, in a, where we are now, and then you're going to put us in, into another place that is even worse.
Well, I, I don't agree that it's worse, but I think the bigger, the bigger picture is we just, all of us up here have been working for years, and last night, we just approved, the town just approved a brand new senior center.
I know.
So, I mean, the, the, you're, you're making it seem like we're kicking the seniors to the curb. We're not. We just approved a brand new senior center that's, I mean, that, we're ass, we're saying as the members of the Board of Selectment...
And if we have a contract there, why don't you stick to our contract and keep us there?
Because it isn't, it, we haven't taken a vote, but we have to look at is what is in the best interest of the town as a whole.
So you're going to get more money, okay.
It's, it's, what is in the best interest of the town as a whole? We're not saying that we're going to shut the senior center down and there's going to be no home for the senior centers. Is it an ideal space? Absolutely not. Is it a workable space? We believe it is a workable space.
Have you been there?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
To which one, to which, which one?
The congregation.
Yes. Yes, all of us have been there.
All I can recall hearing for years is the current facility we're in is not, it's, you're making it work, but it smells uneven floors, the kitchen's not a kitchen, it's a cabinet with a stove. So I think some cases, moving to the church is, is better. I mean, there's light, it doesn't have the smell of that warehouse type building that, that I've heard negatives of over the years, you know? So I don't think it's, I think it, in the big picture, I think it's a better facility than where we are now, besides this, this issue we just talked about. And I think we'll have to, Steve will have to look into the funerals and things like that. Those, the building during the day, the church has agreed, is going to be used by the seniors. The director is going to run that area for those days, except for this one time.
It is definitely an inconvenience. You know, you are used to the Artwell State place, whereas this one is definitely inconvenient. We all agree on that. But at the same time, you know, as Chris said or Pat said, you know, looking at the new senior center, can we adjust? Just for, you know, less than a year or less than 12 months? That's all we are looking at now. Can we adjust? So if it is not last week, you know, we may be saying differently, but they are, they should be happy that we are getting a new senior center. So this is an inconvenience for a very short time. Is it possible to work it out?
Can we talk about the benefits that there are?
Yeah. Do you want me to just, let's hear some questions first? Do you want to handle?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What happened to the modular plan that you, your board voted on at last meeting?
There was, there was a, we, well, I think the board, I think the board in the whole thinks this is a better facility than the modular.
But tomorrow, yes, on the modulas.
But the, since then, the church has offered more space to us. That was one of the big questions. They offered us a room upstairs, we're going to clean up a room downstairs, so they offered us more space. That was one of the issues we had. And then we all, at least me, I think some of the other board members, if it was the modular or helping out a local church and making it work right, I think that that's the best thing we should do. And there's, there's some issues with the PACs. We, you know, we need, we didn't run it by the PACs to see if it's an issue. And then there's some issues with getting it done quick enough to make, to make it work. So.
Okay, I just have one more comment.
Yep.
From Patrick. You mentioned about the taxes, more taxes coming into the town. Well, that won't even happen until they have an occupancy permit for the, for the new addition that he's putting on. So that wouldn't even happen for at least two years that you'll have to do more taxes.
Right, but James, we have to understand, we're looking forward to the future for next 25.
It, it won't happen at all if we don't vacate the building. The tenant's not going to come in. We're working with the landlord to bring a, a manufacturer into town with 150 jobs and a $4 million renovation on the building. If we stay there until the, until the senior center is built, that deal falls through. And, and now we don't, the taxes that, that are going to come in a year or two don't come at all. That's what, that's why we're working with the owner of the building because he's looking to, to put $4 million worth of, of construction onto the tax base that will stay forever. And oh, by the way, bring in, you know, people that are going to, we, you see on a couple of places closed down, restaurants closed down, well, the 150 workers there are going to have to eat. And they're going to use the local restaurants. It's, it's going to benefit the community as a whole.
And then, and you know, and the landlord has been, has been good to us. I mean, we, we rented, we rented the town hall at, it was like $13 a square foot. When we downsized, he was willing to work with us, lower it 30 percent and to help out the senior center. And that's been, you know, like a $15,000 savings to us. So we, you know, sure, we could just vote, we, we want to stay there, but we're trying to look at, as Mr. Crowley said, the big picture and what's best for the whole town in general.
I understand your, your concerns. I think we also have to look at this as a give and take on both sides for a better end result. And a better end result, because we now have more space at the Congregational Church, the agreement is between the Congregational Church and the person that's, you know, renting your, the space now that we're leasing from. So they've are, they've worked out a lot of give and take, and I think we're, we're a little bit losing that, that as everybody has said, you're not in the perfect world now. You're not going to be in the perfect world until the new center is built. And actually, if we look at it, there's a good chance that's going to be completed even sooner if they follow like they did on the police station. So when, when we're looking at it, I, I understand the confidentiality and people within the town, but I also have to realize that people run into people at all different spots. So if, if people are worried, and I understand you have to keep confidentiality like many places do, do you set, it's my understanding you don't set up times for those people to come in. So there could be other people from town in line waiting to use your food pantry. So people do see people coming and going without sharing information. So if, if you're saying people are lining up at 11:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they don't have, they have, this is when you're open, but they don't have a 12 o'clock appointment, so they're not going to run into somebody they might know at 1:00.
Yeah, but there's nothing else going on at the church at that time.
But those people waiting all see each other.
Right.
So that's, and that's my, that's my point, is there's a degree of the confidentiality, but it's not in a seclusion that they come in one door and go out another door and nobody sees them. And if we're willing to give and take for a better end result, that's what we have to do as a board.
We're just saying that you would be very surprised to see who is in that line. And would you go to a food pantry if you knew that a lot of your peers were going to be there having coffee and lunch? I don't think you would.
But there's nothing saying the 10 of, the five of us couldn't be in line at the same time and I see who's there. That's, that's all I'm saying. It's not so confidentiality now that people are lining up in a space where nobody sees them. So there could be 10 people in line, and it could be the 10 of us, the 10 people in the audience, they see each other. That's, that's my point. As in, it's not like you come at 10:15 so you don't run into somebody at 11:00. That's where I think we have to realize that.
I think, you know, can I, I think among themselves, if we five, we know that we are going to the food pantry, but they don't want to see someone outside of, to see us. That's what they, they are looking for.
Right. Well, I mean, I think, I think we, we, I think the best thing for this, for the senior director to do is either have events in the morning till people start lining up on that one day a month, 12 days a year, and then possibly have off-site, they're not going to be drinking coffee, and people are going to be walking by, and that is not going to happen. The 1:00 to 4:00 or the 12:00 to 4:00, that's not going to happen. But I'm told that pickup for the daycare center is at noon time, so there's cars coming in to pick up kids. So there, there is public there, but I, I don't want to add to that situation. I think the best thing that would happen is that, that day, once a month, they either have events somewhere else in town. The library, I don't know, here, I'm sure this building can be used if you want to have some arrangements, you know, something, having, using this room. I mean, this room can be used for even exercise and things like that, so it would be, it's, it is going to be, that one day a month is going to be an inconvenience.
Can they serve food again?
I don't think there's a kitchen. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know about the one day a month for food. I mean, maybe that can be the case. I don't know, but it just, we need to kind of work to make.
We don't want to give up the food pantry in West Boylston.
No, 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 no. We're talking about, we have no control over that. It's the senior center is all we're talking about.
So we are not talking about the food pantry at all. You can keep your, keep the confidentiality. All we are saying is, you know, can the senior programs on that day can be switched around? Can we work around?
Yeah, we're not, we're not asking.
You don't want to lose any confidentiality, no.
Yeah. So that's a issue.
Can we talk about what Steve has offered?
So, so the, the owner of the, the building has, we're not the only tenants that are there doing this. He's moved, moving other people out, making arrangements for other people, but I know we're the only one that we really care about, is us. So what, what Steve has offered to, to do for the, for the town and for the seniors is he'll waive the rent that we're paying currently until the lease, until we move out, till the lease runs out. He will run all the IT, the phones, everything needed for the computers, the checking system to the, to the church. He'll do some renovation to some carpets and some painting to different rooms that the church is willing to give us. He will pay for the moving from the senior center to either storage or to the temporary senior center, and then from wherever all this stuff is to the new senior center when it's built next year. He will work out a locked, locked refrigerator for the senior center's items and some cabinets that are secure that are only under the control of the director. And same with her office is going to be a locked area that's going to be for her only. He will donate over the next few years, $15,000 first time, $30,000 total to a gift account that will be used for the senior center, for the, either putting, buying things for the new building, putting some money aside for future things, like in a year, the director says, I need something, we'll keep some money into that gift account for, for use of that. That won't come out of the town. And he'll also make arrangements to pay, and he'll pay for the janitor that we currently have in place, so we can keep him to help out the senior center. So that's, you know, that's, that's what he's offered to do for us, and that's...
The rent is? You said the, and rent is weird, but you didn't see the figure, number.
He, he will waive the rent. It's, it's somewhere in the, between $35,000 and $45,000, depending on that he will, he will save the town. So, and again, I'm not making my decision only on, if this did not work, we didn't get the extra rooms, he didn't, you know, we didn't get the extra spots to put it, the money wouldn't have been my only, I wouldn't have said, yes, let's do it, it's not going to work. But I think it's going to work. I think it's a better facility than we're in now, because there are going to be inconveniences. We understand that one day a month, but that's the only one we see right now, so I don't know of any other.
I know we're going to be inconvenienced for the next, one second, James. One, we're going to be inconvenienced for the next 12 months. For 12 months, we have a brand new senior center, so we're going to have to give a little take, but it's something, we have to, we have to look out for the town for the long run. And this is going to be taxes to the town for the next 25, 50 years, that we're going to gain something out of this for, for inconveniences of 12 months.
I was just wondering, what, what is the church monetary going to get? I mean, they're heating and they're lighting and everything is going to be going up because we're going to be there? Is he going to take care of that?
I can answer that. The, Steve has an arrangement with the church that we're not involved with. He's, he, so with, with this, with this savings, the landlord is also paying the church for rent. They're not, yeah, that's without a doubt. I mean, so that's why, that's why I thought it was a great, great, we're, we're doing something good for the town. He's helping out the town, plus we're helping out a struggling church.
Right. And the, I mean, the bills are definitely going to go up with the church.
Right. Steve is working that out with, that's, that's completely between him. We're not paying anything of that.
So no, like lobby, nothing? He's going to, the town has nothing to do with any of that?
Steve's, they rent, whatever they currently do for that, for that will, will still happen.
All right.
I mean, so, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, if I can just add, on the landlord at 27 Harrowell Street, this year, Christmas falls on a Tuesday, and so does in New Year's, so you have two days that you've just reduced from your concerns or conflicts.
Do you move the pantry to a different date? Does that happen?
On holiday. The pantry will happen on Christmas?
The food pantry is the third Tuesday of the month, which I don't believe is New Year's.
No.
That's, I mean, we can, any other?
So if it fell, if it fell on a holiday, what would happen? If it, if Christmas went on a Tuesday?
If it fell on a holiday, we'd go to the week prior because the week after would not service our clients that, you know, these families, unfortunately, the families in town would be with little children, and when, we'd have to go to the week before.
Christmas and New Year's is a Tuesday, so we'd go to the week before.
Right.
Yes, yes.
But the third Tuesday is the, is New Year's, the third Tuesday in January?
No, the week before, yeah. So it would be the same day, so that's not even an issue, so. It would be 12, it'd be 12, yeah, right. He, yeah, he thought, he thought it was right.
He was incorrect, so I just wanted to clear that up.
He understands that, right. Any other concern? One second, ma'am.
Sandy Flynn from Westland Circle.
Yes.
I know that the facility over at the church isn't ideal. I know that the town needs to have taxes. Has it been looked into, because it is a smaller space, of maybe having classes or things so that the services are not cut down for the seniors during that year, someplace else, like at the library? At the library, or at this place? So is that a possibility to, to, in conjunction with the church, so that the programs can continue for the seniors?
So the plan, the plan would be the director will have to make... So, the plan, the plan would be the director will have to make some arrangements. So, for instance, if there's a, if there's an event going on here, or an event going on at the library, um, the library's been spoken to, I think, the director.
I met with the director.
She's willing to work.
Happy to help, you know, coordinate so that they could schedule things that would need to take place at the library if they can't be done in the church.
And I'm sure this facility can be used during the day?
Yeah, we can, we will absolutely work to make our facility available as needed.
And I think it's a win to get people to the library. Maybe they're gonna do things that they didn't usually do in the past. I mean, so, um, um, Bob, do you wanna?
Well, for you, Chris, will the owner of the property be asking for a TIF once that building is built?
He, there is, there has been not, there hasn't been any ask yet. I don't know if that's the case. I mean, I, I don't know the answer. It hasn't been asked yet.
Well, we've been notified that there will be.
They will be, okay, so they have.
There, we have been notified that there, there will be requesting a TIF, so I'm anticipating that probably.
They will be asking. I'm sorry, they will be asking for a TIF.
Starting to negotiate something.
Well, I would suggest that that would diminish the, uh, beauty of the, uh, tax rule being increased. Typically, what does a TIF run, thirteen years?
No, it can run anything from five or on. It just depends on the value.
Completely negotiated.
To, you know, to what, what's being increased.
But I think Pat, but I think, I believe Pat already said that, you know, we're looking at, you know, all we're ever talking about is taxes, so we're not looking at tomorrow or the next day. We're looking at twenty years or ten years down the road when these TIFs are gone. But they, there'll be a, there'll be money made the first few years, too. It's, you know, it's not completely waived, 'cause we gave a TIF to another business, that that one's gonna be starting to come off the books, and they're gonna be paying more taxes, so, um, it's a win to get people to come to town.
And don't forget, a TIF is only for the new construction. The existing building.
Four million dollar portion.
The, the new building still gets regular taxes. There's no, there's no discount.
Only the addition.
Only the, the addition.
Can I say something?
Uh huh. Bob, you know it, this getting through the election, getting to the town meeting, it's close call. So, now, uh, all the seniors says, we are going to stay in the same place. We don't care about any revenue coming to the town. Think of what the, those, uh, what are the other people will think about the seniors. The seniors are getting a senior center. At the same time, they don't want to go through little inconvenience.
Well, I, I think, guys, that we are all ecstatic over the fact that the promises that have been made over the years are finally coming to fruition. I think that's wonderful. I don't think anyone. I think two-thirds of the people came away from town meeting last night, very, very happy. Uh, there are others who.
A little more than two-thirds, but yes, we understand, yeah. What else were you gonna say?
Very close, you know.
I'm sorry?
What else were you gonna, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, Cory. I belong to two churches, uh, Cory, C-O-R-I, criminal.
Yeah, okay.
And a registration.
Yeah, whatever it is, an investigation. When these two churches, I'll let you put counsel here, and St. George's in, uh, in Worcester, when any of the adults intermingle with the kids, all of the adults have to be Cory approved.
The, the kids are in a facility that we will not be, they, they are in a locked facility in another part of the building. We're not, the seniors aren't gonna be walking by kids running around. If that's what you're asking.
When I walked through the building on Saturday with, with all of us, uh, I was told, and I thought it was by the gentleman Steve, who was our host, that children would in fact be using the upper room on occasion.
The second floor?
Yes.
That was the Sunday school.
I believe it was referred to as a singing group.
Possibly some music, a music room.
There is, there is, um, the potential that there's a music group that would be using different rooms than we would be using. Um, when, when you have a Cory, it's when there's regular routine interaction. So, for example, you know, the people who work within the senior center need to be Coryed. People who may be coming into the senior center for irregular whatever do not need to be Coryed. It depends on the degree of involvement. You know, if, if you see a child walking down the hallway at the same time that a senior might be walking down the hallway, there is no need to Cory a senior just because he may see another child who is a member of the nursery school set. So, it's, you know, there, I think people need to understand what the Cory system is and how it works, and there should not be any issue.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was talking about the, the daycare or the, that, that center. The music issue, I know there was some talk of maybe one of those rooms are used for music or something like that, but, um, I, I forgot about that part. But as far as the, we will not be, seniors will not be walking around with the, the daycare center or what, what's it called? I mean.
Nursery school.
The nursery school. I mean, that's, they're in a different facility, a different part of the building. Ma'am?
My name is Doris Johnson, and I am the dining manager of the senior center.
Okay.
And my concerns are probably not overall, but just with my area. I think you're going to put Lisa in a room up on the second floor, a mile away from the kitchen. I have people from Worcester who come in every single day to bring us tons of food. They're going to have to come in and squeeze into a little elevator to go down three stairs, because what they're carrying does not go up and downstairs. It has to be on a flat surface. And that would be the only way they could get down and back up again, is to bring all their stuff in their truck and bring it into this little area with a little, I remember the church, I know what size the elevator is. It's a small elevator. And that being said, Lisa is not the only one that needs secure files. I do. I need a desk, and I need a secure desk. I have confidential files that I keep not just for the town, but for the nutrition program, which goes into the state every single month. I can't have a desk or a computer or a, I need a fax machine and I need a copy machine. And I don't need them a mile away either. My desk has to be in the kitchen area.
Well, it will, what the plan was, we were talking to, the, the room right to the left of the kitchen, possibly put the desks in there, couple desks in there.
And we're not talking about putting, uh, a locked refrigerator and a freezer two doors down from the kitchen?
One door down, there's a storage room, but I believe, Steve, is that correct? And that's when we were talking about doing it. And possibly, I think some of the cabinets in the kitchen area possibly, the church will let us lock.
They will have to be locked.
We could add a lock to it.
We, we can't use their things. They can't use ours.
Correct.
And all we could use actually that's available to us in that kitchen is an oven.
Right.
And a sink.
And the counters.
The counters.
Kitchen, yeah, the kitchen area, which is, which we all know is probably four times the size, or three times the size of the current kitchen.
You're right, it is. But at least this little bit of a crummy kitchen that we have right now is convenient. I'm in and out of a refrigerator forty times a day, and I really don't wanna walk, walk a mile to open it up every time.
You won't, I mean, it will be in the, well, then it's gonna, I mean, there's gonna be, these, these issues are still gonna be an issue in the new senior center. I don't know, until now, I don't know where these desks that you're talking about, that I've learned of today are gonna go in the new senior center. So, I don't know if, okay, see, I, we've never talked about desks in the kitchen, so.
That, my desk would be in the kitchen.
That, that, that would be the first I've heard of it, so, I mean, again, it, I, I don't know how to answer it.
I don't know, I don't know how that's going to work.
You will be.
I have to worry about packing the meals on wheels and getting the meals on wheels out. You have to understand, we're not working with paid people here. We're working with volunteers, and none of them are twenty years old.
No, I think the current, the kitchen at the church seems like a better, you know, it's a counter this long. I can imagine it, it'll be a lot easier for it to work in that type than the, the kitchen that maybe is from there to pat in the current kitchen. I mean, again, I just think it would, seems like it would work a lot better for you. I don't know if any of the board members have any.
To go back, it's, it's not an ideal situation. We realize that, but it's.
I know it's not.
But it's something that we all, we're all making a sacrifice or something to do for the town. That's what we're doing.
Again, I can't afford to have any desk or any part of my paperwork exposed. It has to be locked.
Definitely make, make sure there's a lock cabinet.
Locking cabinets and, and a desk, you know, that, that will.
In the kitchen area.
Yes.
I'm trying, I'm trying to put a, kind of, I'm not sure about the office that's proposed upstairs for myself. If I recall, it's not that big, but the copier and the fax machine will have to be in my office at the same time, as well as all my files, um, 'cause that will have to be protected and networked to all the computers.
We realize that.
Any other, oh, I'm sorry.
Would, would you explain again the gift account that was gonna be established?
The, the, the town will establish a gift account for this, for the thirty thousand dollars in, in money. Now, how that, how we work that out, some of the money will go to the construction, not the construction, but possibly buying some benches, buying some chairs, buying some, maybe the pool tables. I don't know. Some part out of the, out of the funding that the town approved. And then we, the plan is, again, these are details that can be worked out, some will stay in there for future things. After we get in the building, Lisa says, it's all done, you know, we've, we've signed, sealed everything, and Lisa or other volunteers say, you know, we need some more pans and pots, or we need some, we need a certain table. There'll be something in that gift account that they can just go to and take and buy.
It's gonna be a, a gift account that is established for the senior center, whether that's construction costs or operation costs. It'll be thirty thousand dollars that will be earmarked for the senior center. How much of it is gonna go towards the construction? How much of it is gonna be left in there for future use? We as a board haven't taken a vote on that, haven't decided on that. That's to be determined. But, but we know there's gonna be thirty thousand dollars earmarked for the senior center.
And one thing that's guaranteed, as Pat just said, that's where it's going. It's not an account that a future town administrator can say, I'm gonna move that money and I'm gonna pay for, uh, electricity at the town hall. No. We have other gift accounts that are only used for what they're, what they're said they're gonna be used for. They cannot be changed.
I guess my concern is, would the thirty thousand dollars be dumped into the building fund, the, the construction right now?
I've already, we've already said that. It's, no, it won't be. We're gonna work out the details. Some may go to buy things that are currently in the contract for the scene, for the current senior center. But the plan is, I think this board agreed, that a portion's gonna be left in there for future purchases. And some will go towards the, to the building.
I think what you're asking is, of the five point seven million dollar price tag, is some of the money that's gonna go into this, this account going to lower that price tag? The answer is yes. So.
And that's why I have a real trouble with Patrick, is if in fact we're being inconvenienced, we're speaking COA, uh, the seniors, it would seem to me that those funds would be put into some account that would be able to be, uh, taken out at the direction of the COA. You know, I, I'm not all enthused about seeing thirty thousand dollars go into the town. Thirty thousand dollars going into the, uh, direction of the director, for example, with approval by the board or whatever. Some sort of check or balance in there. But that would be a lot more palatable to me than the thirty thousand going into the general fund, even though it's specified.
It's not going into the general fund. You don't, that's, that's, you're saying something entirely different. It's going into an account that will be, can, that would, the senior center or the director can say what's needed with the approval of the board, and it will be, and it'll be, but these gift accounts can be worded any way the door, the town administrator says. But don't say it's gonna go to the general fund. It can't be used to pay electricity or buy something for the DPW. It's gonna go. And, but, and as Pat said, and I said a few times, some may go towards knocking off that five point seven million, just like the possible fundraising we're talking about. But my hope, and I think the board agrees, that a portion will stay for future purchases. Now, I can't imagine, in the next few years, you're gonna, the director's gonna need thirty thousand dollars worth of items in a brand-new building, so that's why we think that some will come to the building off the bottom line.
My response to that is, I understand where you're coming from, but looking at the big picture, the town just voted to appropriate five point seven million dollars earmarked for the seniors. I think it would, it would be, probably makes sense, looking at the big picture for the town, to say, where, yes, the seniors are, are being inconvenienced, but we have thirty thousand dollars that's coming in, that's earmarked for the, for the brand-new senior center. I personally, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, I think some of that money should go towards the construction price of the senior center, and, and you obviously don't think that. And that's just, it's gonna be a difference of opinion between the two of us.
It's no different than the, I don't, I don't see it any different as the possible fundraising. The possible fundraising isn't going to an account for future purchases. It's going to, we've told the people that would, if we can fundraise, which they are working on, we'll lower that price as much as we can. Dave?
How soon does the decision have to be made? 'Cause the Council on Aging meets on Monday, you know, our monthly meeting. Will we have a chance to, before you vote on this, will we have a chance to discuss it at our meeting?
I think the board.
I, I, I intend to vote on this tonight.
Yeah, I, I think we have, we have the.
I, and, and understanding that the Council on Aging may be against this, we've heard all of the concerns, even if the Council on Aging said, don't do this, I would still, that would not sway the way I plan to vote on this, because I'm looking at not just the seniors, I'm looking at the town as, as a whole.
No, well, I understand that. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying now that, you know, you have all this other additional information as far as what is going to happen, all the contributions and stuff. I think that should be presented to the Council of Aging.
You're talking about the thirty thousand dollar piece?
No, he's talking about the whole project.
Chris mentioned, you know, what the land, what the landlord is gonna do. You know, I think all that information should be given, you know, to the Council of Aging. And I understand what you're saying about, you know, you know, it doesn't, it's not really gonna matter, because you have to look out for the whole town. But I mean, at least give us the opportunity to say, oh, yeah, okay, well, maybe that does sound like a good idea.
I, I'm not sure the council, but I believe two or three of the Council on Aging members were here.
I only see two of us.
Jan is left.
Yeah, there were, there were two or three of you, right?
There's, there's nine people.
Yeah, so.
So, I mean, I, I'm just saying, you know, I think it's, it's just, you know, the right thing to do, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. We'll have to be, do meet on Wednesday night.
And I would have, one other thing, I would have to disagree, but that thirty thousand dollars, because it's a, it's a gift, that should be totally, I don't think it should go to the construction. I think it should just be put into the fund and let it sit there, and as, if, as the council, as the senior center needs things, that money should come out of there, and it'll draw interest and stuff. I don't think it should go to, towards the construction. But that's, you know, I agree with.
So, I mean, I guess that, that argument could be made, that all the fundraising that gets done doesn't go to the construction. But, I mean, that's, that's not what we, I mean, I, I don't, I don't agree with that.
We haven't taken a vote on what's gonna happen with the donation. So, we, we can't, none of us can sit here and say, X is gonna go to construction, X is gonna go towards, uh, uh, you know, future, you, you, future needs of the senior center. We, that, this is all happening today. So, we, we have not as a board made that decision.
Okay, any?
One last question, Chris.
That's fine.
In the event there is a group of people, a significant group of people, who do not agree with your decision, how can that, your decision be overturned or rescinded? Would it take a special town meeting? Would it be something that could be done at the regular town meeting?
The decision that we possibly make tonight?
Let's say, I would try, let's say that you wanna go ahead with this, uh, termination of the lease at an early date.
We're not terminating the lease, we, we still have the lease.
All right.
Do you, do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I mean, it's only the Board of Selectmen can make decisions about these real estate-type transactions, which include a lease arrangement. And even if town meeting were to take a vote, I, I can almost guarantee that if an attorney from KP Law was here tonight, they would tell you that that would be a non-binding vote of town meeting, that it is under statutory role of the Board of Selectmen, that they make the decisions regarding these real estate transactions.
Well, and there's not a town meeting scheduled in, in the next month. I mean, the residents, no, they, well, there could not be a resident. no, they, well, there could not be. Residents can't just say, we want to have a town meeting, let's have it.
If I'm not mistaken, if you've got 100 people who petition for a special town meeting on a, a single topic, that in the course of action, it could be taken.
I, we would, we would have to-
You can petition for a special town meeting. I believe it's 200 registered voters, whatever the number is. But, I mean, certainly-
Even if they did, they couldn't overrule this decision.
But what I'm saying is, that I've had this discussion with previous, with Copelman and Page and other communities before, and it is only the Board of Selectmen that can make decisions about these types of real estate transactions. And even if town meeting were to take a vote, it would not be binding. It would be guiding.
Well, let's all remember, we're all on the same team. We're all on the same team here, doing what's right for everybody in the town. You have to understand that. I'm sorry, John. I can't, I'm as deaf as a stone and- I can't talk.
He said, he said that, we're trying to do what's best for the whole town. We're all, we're all working together here. We've worked, some board members have 10 or 12 years been on a building committee. I mean, I have been, 10 or 12 years. So, you know, we're not, we're not making this decision lightly. Would, you know, would we like to stay in the facility we're in, that, that all we've heard about for the last two years is not a good facility? It smells, the floors are uneven, it, things have been getting stolen. Would we, you know, I guess, yeah, I guess we could, we'd like to stay there, but we have a landlord in town asking to work with him, and we're looking at what's the big picture. That's not all John said. John only said the beginning. I added it. Sorry, John, I'm not, maybe you didn't say all that, but that's, okay.
I just have one quick question. Do you know if the members of the church have voted on this yet?
Yes.
They have.
And again, the agreement between the church is not, is not our agreement, it's the landlord's agreement.
They have voted on it?
And they have-
It's a unanimous vote.
Correct. They voted on it as a church body and church council, and it was 100% unanimous.
And they, and they, they, they love the extra income. It's really going to help, of course it's going to, it's going to help out a church. And we know all churches are struggling, so. Ma'am, did you have something to add to that?
She answered it.
Bob, did you have something else?
Public, uh, public meeting, if you want to outside on the street, I'll be here to tell you exactly how I feel. But I can't bring that up here.
I think you have, but I appreciate, no, I appreciate your concerns.
Let me say that there's a certain element of what I see as unfairness, notwithstanding what happened last night. What I see is an entrepreneur, a good, solid businessman, being able to take advantage of a situation on the backs of the seniors.
And I'm going to disagree with that statement. I'm going to say that, that he is, yes, looking out for his interests, and I'm sitting here looking out for the interests that are in the best interest of the entirety of the town. We're not saying that we're going to close the senior center and give you nothing until the new senior center is built. The senior center we're in now is not ideal. The senior center we're talking about potentially moving you to is not ideal. But it's not like we're, we're moving you from what is now the new senior center to a space that is the Hartwell Street space. It's, to say that it's, you know, he, he's doing this on the backs of the seniors, it's not like this space is completely horrific in comparison to where the senior center is now.
But it was all on floor, where it is now.
I understood.
And him going to would be on two floors.
With an elevator.
With an elevator.
With an elevator. It's, it's, I, like I said, it's not ideal, but, but is that, are you going to sit here and tell me that it's, that's a horrific thing, that it's, it's not ideal?
And, and I, I'm sorry, Pat, you were still going?
No, I'm good.
And, you know, this happens to be the seniors. I, I would still be looking at this the same way if another group was in there, the town hall was still in there. I'd still say what's best for the town is to try to work with this landlord that has always worked with us over the years. I mean, lowered the rent $3, $4, just, he didn't have to do that. He could have went up when we moved out. But instead, he tried to work with us all the time. I mean, and that's, I think that's, that's a win.
And again, it's 12 months. We got to remember that. It's 12 months. It will go by fast.
And we'll see the new building being built during that time, so there's a positive-
Can I just put an O-TI on this? Look, I've been in town 20-plus years. I came to town with nothing. I took a dilapidated, underutilized, polluted, contaminated property on Hartwell Street. It was a disaster. I renovated that building with my own blood, sweat, and tears. I'm not a second, or third, fourth generation developer. I started with nothing. At the rate I'm going, I'm going to end up with nothing. That's my second point. The beating sessions I've taken here. But it was not my intent to move out the seniors before their lease expired. This was a purely business opportunity. We're all opportunists, whether it's in our personal life, business life, spiritual life, what have you. We had a tenant that was on Hartwell Street that loved West Boylston. They were in the building up the street that we recently expanded for Curtis Industries. They saw that building, they loved what we did. They said, Steve, can you do that for us at 127 Hartwell Street? 127 Hartwell Street was the first industrial building in the entire town, built a little bit after I was born, a long time ago, two and a half generations ago. The building is tired. It's old, it's tired, it's in need of renovation. We're making the investment, not just for my pocketbook or checkbook, but for the benefit of the town. And for a tremendous $400 million tenant that's going to bring 150 to possibly 200 well-paying manufacturing, research, engineering, and corporate jobs to town. So, they're thinking of making West Boylston, this particular operation of this company's business, their worldwide headquarters. It's a medical products company, they're not a dirty manufacturer. This is clean manufacturing. So, I just want to close that if I had my brothers, I would have kept the seniors in town, in our building till maybe 2019 and beyond. But the building is in desperate need, the entire property is in desperate need of investment. And that investment doesn't just benefit me, it benefits the town with an improved assessment and increase in taxes that will hopefully maintain your tax base for the foreseeable future. I thank you for the spirited cooperation, and I applaud the Board of Selectmen for working with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And then, just to say it again for the people that might be watching or the people that are here, we looked at other facilities. The church is the best location for us to go with. There's no other spot in town for us to move to.
What happened to checkboard?
The, there is, there was talk of that. We would have parked at the entrance and had to walk to the back corner of that facility.
You've got to put a door around it, something.
That, that is the only place that the, they would have considered renting to us. Everything was looked at. Steve, you looked at it, can you-
I looked extensively at the building. I know the landlord, they're very good family friends, the Chase family. There's one tiny bathroom, there's no kitchen in that building. And the room they were going to offer us was pitch black, like a shoebox.
And it's a warehouse. We're, we're taking out a one warehouse that, well, all we do is complain about and moving them into another warehouse. So, and it, believe me, there was much more than that that he looked at, so. Okay, any other comments? Bob? No. Do I hear a, any other discussion from the board? Okay, do I hear a motion? Oh, do you have something you want to add?
One thing is, you know, they did, you know, brought up the issue. Can we, do we need to vote on it today, or can we do it on Wednesday? So, anyway, you know.
Steve does matter today or Wednesday?
It doesn't really matter, but, I mean, the church has been kind of on hold, because we've been talking about this now for a couple months, but I mean, a couple more days isn't going to matter. But the sooner I can get the ball rolling on an approval, the sooner I can get going with, you know, computer connections and logistical matters and carpeting and paint and requesting rooms and what have you. So, you know, we're not moving Google or IBM here, but there's still some labor and time and investment that we all need to make, including myself and the church, to make this work. So, it'd be ideal if I can secure, you know, a vote tonight. That way, I know what would, what I need to do tomorrow.
I guess, who do you go for? I get, I, the only thing I look at with that is, I'm thinking to myself, the COA, what, what, what could they say that's going to change the board's mind? If waiting till Wednesday, I don't understand. I've heard from two or three COA members here today, if the vote comes back four to two that they want to move, or four to two that they don't want to move, would that change the board's mind? That's, I think, we have to look at.
I think the answer to Roger's question is-
At least, you know-
We don't have to take a vote today, but I'm, I'm trying to craft a mo, I'm about to make a motion on this. I just don't know what the motion should be. Should it be to-
At least, at least let us give them a chance.
Hold on one second, Roger. I'd like to make a motion, but do I, I don't, I don't want it to be this long. Can I say, I'd like to make a motion to change the lease at Hartwell Street to be at the Congregational Church, based on the terms that were discussed at our executive session, and then we make the executive session minutes? I mean, I don't want to-
Everything I read, I read everything publicly.
This is spurred to the terms in this, so you could make the motion that you'd be amending the current lease document to reflect this change to the Congregational Church per the terms that were listed by the vice chair in this meeting.
So moved.
And, well, I don't know if you, do you need to add, to negotiate all of the details? Does that have to be, go into negotiations?
We'll be bringing the revised lease document back to you for your formal approval at your next meeting. But at least this allows, gives me the authority to start working out the details of this agreement.
So, in other words, we will probably, in reality, have another vote on Wednesday, because you'll bring back the lease.
I will be bringing back the draft lease with the changes that are necessary.
With all the changes. So, there could be, I guess, at that time, there could be issues.
I would ask that we hold off and make a vote on this until Wednesday.
So, even if they come up with, you know, very different plan, so it's not going to make any changes, right?
I'll-
I don't, I'm severing and holding off until Wednesday.
Chris, I'll second Pat's motion.
Well, that's fine. We have a motion in a second. I mean, under discussion, would we, would we rather the board be-
Out of respect to the COA.
Again, I, I agree with, I agree with Pat, I agree with Siobhan, that I'm not sure what they can say that's going to change my mind on this issue. But, do you-
Again, you have heard all their, their decisions, all their thoughts and everything, and it's not going to matter because you will make a decision. So, I don't think you need to wait. I'm sorry, Dave, we'll have our meeting, and I will inform them what's been going on and what, and what we're talking about. But yes, anything they say will not have a bearing on their decision, so.
So, I don't know if they, it's, we, we do have a motion in a second. Do I hear any other discussion on that, after the director added her?
I would still like to move out, I mean, wait till, I want you to vote.
I, I mean, we had, we had discussion, and members of the Council on Aging, although they didn't take a vote, are clearly against the move. They're clearly opposed to the move. If the Council on Aging comes back to us and they unanimously vote against the move, it's not going to change my mind, because as I've said more than once today, I feel it's in the best interest of the town. And if I was sitting on the Council on Aging, I'd probably vote against it as well. But I'm not a member of the Council on Aging, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I have to make a motion. So, I don't, I mean, even if they come back-
So, my argument is, you know, so the Council on Aging knows very well about this project, how the public feels about the project. They should, in a realistic way, so, whether to consider the church, yes, this is an inconvenient place, but considering that they are going to get a new senior center, which a lot of people opposed in this town. So, I think, you know, the Council on Aging will realize that. I think they will agree with us. Let's give them a chance, and then, you know, if you don't like it, then, you know, the board can take addition.
I agree with Roger. I think, I hope they come back with some support.
I think, you know, the Council on Aging should realize these things, you know. We are get, we are getting a, you know, rent-free monetary benefit for the COA, and then, you know, a lot of, lot of things. And also, you know, the town as a whole, the taxpayers, other taxpayers, last two days, last one week, everyone, everyone is, you know, opposing this senior center project. So, if the Council on Aging says, oh, and we don't need it, we don't need any of the money for the town, then how they are going to feel again? So, this point, they have to consider on this. Yes, I like to have a, you know, sim, even the temporary place, better, or, you know, much more facility and all. It is inconvenience. It's definitely inconvenient place. But compared to Hartwell Street, can, can I live with that? Yes.
And then, before I get to you, there are two questions. The only thing I'd like to add is, I think when there was a subcommittee, Pat and I, to talk in regards to this issue, and we came in there saying, let's hope we find something in this town that will be a great diff, move. I think we did the best thing. Would we have loved to find something even nicer? Yes. It's not out there. But I, what we're going into is nicer than we are now. So, that's my thought. Ma'am?
Can we talk in timeframe as far as when we're going to have to make the big move?
Probably mid, mid-April?
Yeah.
Mid-April.
Mid-April.
Six weeks. Is there any flexibility on that?
Mid, what, what?
Is there any flexibility on that?
The third week instead of the second week of April, is that what you said?
Because we have the tax program that goes all the way through the middle of April.
Seventeenth?
And then I have the caregivers program, you know, that we're going to the end of April.
Well, I mean-
That's already, that's already-
I think this is, I think this is part of, we have to try to, there's, there's going to be things we have to move. And then, then the first week of May, there's probably a program that you have scheduled.
I'm not, no, I'm not program. Anything that's, anything that's, no.
So, I would think that we have to make-
Why couldn't these programs be done at the new location?
Uh, the caregivers program, we're having people come from all over, not just West Boysham, Worcester, Holden, Rutherford.
So, we can occupy-
Why can't they come to the new location?
All right, to this room, to this great room for this, for that facility.
It's not like there's a, there's a, there's a infrastructure at the existing place.
It's hard to restart and, you know, change it.
And I'm mostly concerned about the seniors in our town, not the, all the-
This is-
Yeah.
The tax program.
Phil, yeah, the tax will be after tax season. You can do it here, tax program. No, the tax program will, tax, Pat tells us will be after, Pat, seventeenth.
April 17th.
It'll be, it'll be after tax season. So, that program won't be an issue. Phil, what did you have to add?
It's something that we haven't really spoken about. Last night, we asked voters to be reasonable, to help us build a new senior center, to be cooperative. For us, as a Council on Aging, representing the seniors of West Boylston, to demand the full execution of the lease in the current space, I think would represent a public relations hit of unacceptable proportions.
That's exactly what I was saying.
And I just think that now is the time for us to suck it up, work it out, somehow make it work.
That's why I think we should put the vote out the next week, so the Council on Aging can do that and come back to us with a positive.
Well, we can't, we-
We can't say-
You can't say they'll come back with a positive. We know what the, what three of, at least three of the members are doing.
We're all about flexibility, and I, I-
I think it's-
I can't count, you know, this is the Council on Aging board, I'm just the director. We will do this, it's just-
I think we hold them a chance to do that.
It's just the time wise, it's just, it's like, no, it's just very strict.
The reason I, I asked that was just for common courtesy, because there's a lot of information that Chris read tonight, that, I don't know how many people would be watching this, but when Lisa comes to the meeting on Monday, she can give all this information. And like Mr. Happy said, you know, get the support. But I think the most important thing is common courtesy, just to let everybody know, okay, this is what has been, you know, what's going to happen. And maybe there'll be a different response. I mean, I understand that you're going to make the decision, you know, whatever decision you're going to make, but I'm just looking for common courtesy. That's all.
Okay, do I hear a, an issue?
Yeah, based, based on, on the, what I'm hearing here, I think it's pretty clear the, the way the board is, is leaning on this. But I don't think waiting till Wednesday to take a formal vote will be an issue. So, I'd like to withdraw my motion at this time.
And you withdraw the second?
Second.
I'll withdraw the second.
Withdraw the second. So, that's all we need? Do we need to vote on that? No. Withdraw the second. So, that's all we need? Do we need to vote on that?
If there's no active motion, there's no vote.
We'll put it on the, we'll put it on the agenda for Wednesday.
Okay, um, so what, that's, it's on for Wednesday. Can we fit it in on Wednesday?
We'll fit it in on Wednesday.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, consider voting to sign discharge of mortgage for property on 26 Jasmine Drive. Do you have something to add to that? It's on the agenda.
It's just, um, we, we need to do that.
Thank you, folks, for the, for your comments. I'm sorry. Thanks very much.
I'll make a motion to sign the discharge of the mortgage for the property at 26 Jasmine Drive.
I'll second.
A motion and a second? Yeah, you wanted to give...
Um, this, this was after terrace, property. There was an after terrace property that the owner had rented out.
Pat, folks, we still have a meeting? I'm sorry. Steve?
Yes.
Steve? Thank you.
There, there was a property in after terrace that the owner had rented out for above, made a profit on it. And the, the deed restriction on those properties say that you cannot make a profit. He has fulfilled his portion of paying the town back, sold the property. And it's, this is just a clerical thing to, to sign the discharge that should have been signed a while ago.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Here's the, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? I have a motion, and someone say second? Second. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you very much.